At 6:03 PM. So I am going to ask Ms. Julia to lead us in the pledge, our student board member.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
All right, and I am going to also begin with roll call, trustee Pizzotti. Clerk, clerk, clerk Coffee present. And as a reminder, both President Kirby Gonzalez and trustee Venegas are out today. Schools, students, board member Julia Shams.
Present.
Perfect, so we are going to begin. Announcements of actions taken in closed session, the session, government code section 54957.6, conference with labor negotiators, WSTA, CSEA, and management, information received. E2, government code section 54957, public employee discipline dismissal release, information received. Moving on to the next item, do I have, we have approval of the agenda, is there any amendments? I understand there is an amendment to the agenda.
Yes.
I've had some caffeine, so.
I would like to request that we move the tax resolution item, action item after the Studio W item, which would move it to P2.
P2. Okay, any objections by board members?
So our, under our action items, after we have P1, the approval of the Studio W architects, I'm asking if we could move our P5 to P2, just because we have visitor.
Any objections or questions about this?
I would say we could even move it up to the three.
I will look at the staff to see what their preference and desire is in terms of the specific. That's the, that's the, okay, okay. I will entertain a motion to.
What, can I just pause for a second?
To move it to the first item.
Oh, never mind, never mind. Hey, I was just trying to be considerate, we're good, we're good. I'm sorry, then yes, that's fine.
Like motion?
P2. I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Okay, all in favor?
I.
We have the adopted agenda with the amendment P5 moving up to P2. Thank you so much. Next, we have, we do not have any communications or celebrations today. And we are going to move on to student board member and association report. We are, Ms. Julia Shams, you are up first.
Can I move it over? Thank you. Hello, I'm Julia, as I've been introduced, and I'm gonna start off with Bridgeway Island, an elementary school. So far, they've had their career week and it went great. They want to give thanks to the parents and community for contributing and teaching the students all about new professions and what they can do beyond middle school and high school as well. They had their Thrive Assembly and awards were given to students, as well as their PTO trunk or treat, which is sensory friendly, and that will be happening this Friday. Riverbank, the Otters had their SDC field trip to Dave's Pumpkin Patch, which is very nice. It's a great pumpkin patch. And thanks to the Community Schools grant, they have their new marquee installed, and MTSS meetings will be happening for all grade levels. The same slide. All right. The Elkhorn Tigers have parent involvement in their modernization project, as well as their avid students, their middle school students went to Sierra College, and their eighth grade avid went to UC Berkeley. Their Fall Fiesta will also be November 3rd. The Southport Ducks were recognized for improving their attendance this year compared to their last year, and they want to thank the families who joined them in their walk-in role to school as a part of their October kindness activities. Stonegate Lions have a mural thanks to the color of our world, and November 2nd will be their Heritage Night from 5:30 to 7:00 PM, and they'll have performances, crafts, food, et cetera. Westmore Oaks is having their Friday rallies, and everyone is invited to those. And their kindergarten went on a pumpkin patch field trip as well. Their Westmore Oaks Red Ribbon Week will be celebrated, as well as Dia de los Muertos and trunk or treat. And Westfield wants to give a shout out to their amazing school social worker, since she has been going through and giving anti-bullying presentations to their students. So thank you for that. The Washington Unified Virtual Academy wants to shout out their 70% of middle school students who have made the honor roll for the first quarter, and more than 90, 95% of their students report that they feel liked and cared for by the teachers, and it's a self-safe and welcoming environment. They also average about 40 minutes a week in both reading and math lessons on IRET. Evergreen Opportunity is an academy that started this week, and the program is offered to 7th, 8th, and 9th graders who need a little bit of extra support and social emotional skill building. The Washington Adult School has opened their registration for students who are 18 or older, and the programs available are as follows. And, yeah. Yolo High School had their handball tournament this past Friday, and it was a success, according to the picture, picturing them after their handball tournament. And students went to Roseville High School for their interleague meeting with all other leadership classes in the city area, as well as worked on Dia de los Muertos celebrations for November 6th. And now to move on to River City High School, which is the school that I attend. The culinary students helped prepare meals for Rayleigh's Food for Families event, and we participated in events for breast cancer awareness, as well as Anti-Bullying Month through lunchtime activities and fundraising events. Our Raider athletes have also been on fire, girls' water polo just won league yesterday, and both girls and boys are off to playoffs, as well as the rest of our fall sports. Cross-country has gone to sections, tennis has also gone to sections. Football has their last home game tomorrow, and they're playing for a playoff spot. And the girls' volleyball team unfortunately lost in the first playoff round, but they, they made it to playoffs, so that is great of them. And we will also be celebrating our Dia de los Muertos celebration on November 2nd on campus. Washington Middle, Washington Middle College High School has been busy this month, and they're celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month, they made ofrendas and learned about the culture. And their homecoming theme is for National Red Ribbon Ribbon Week, with daily activities and finishing up with a dance, Alice in Wonderland, Don't Go Down the Rabbit Hole, as a way to say no to drugs. And they wrapped up their fabulous WASC visit and had a great time showing off their school. Now I want to move on to state and national student leadership positions, which is newly introduced due to the great achievements that two students at our school have made. So both of these students, Motovy Hooks and Kailani Griffith, had become a part of the board for BSU and our club at River City. So Motovy has become the Black Students of California United Health Ambassador, and Kailani has become the Black Students of California United Youth Senator. And here's a little bit more about their position as follows. They're really passionate about improving the health and well-being of black youth in California, and they want to strive for social justice and equality. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the update, wonderful, wonderful presentation. Next up, we have the WSTA report, and we have President Nepp.
I think it's on now. In celebration of my 46th birthday, I attempted to look younger. It's not working so well, but. Good evening, Superintendent Hildreth, Vice President Wong, I guess stand-in President Wong tonight. Clerk Coffee, Clerk Coffee, and the rest of the trustees, it's good to see you. It's great to see our. It's great to see our student board member here tonight. It's always good to hear how intelligent our students, our student board members are, really, really awesome. Last week, I sent the board a draft resolution on community schools in West Sacramento. I really want to promote that idea of having a draft, a draft resolution. As you are aware, there is a sense that trust has been broken in the community schools process. In order to regain that trust, community partners need to start fresh with a commitment that all four pillars of the community schools initiative are going to be adhered to. This past week, after seeing an early accounting of the $200,000 planning grant, it appeared to some folks that $80,000 was left unspent. It turns out, after my meeting with, and I really appreciate her clarifying with Dr. Hildreth today, that $80,000 was not left unspent. But we did spend $100,000 towards our, our partnership with the United Way. And I think that this sort of miscommunication on spending could have been avoided if, from the beginning, all of the community partners would have been a part of the budget process. Again, the community schools plan, the community schools initiative in the state of California is intended for the community to have shared leadership and guidance. And we've been struggling with that. Now, part of that, and I talked to Dr. Hildreth about that today, is we haven't been very effective in making sure that all community partners, including those that are disenfranchised from the system, have been incorporated. And this is some heavy lifting work. We have to, and I share this with Dr. Hildreth and Dr. Maskervanius when the community schools process started. We have to go and find our community partners where they are, be that at churches, community groups, bongo circles, wherever it is. We have to find folks and let them know that this is their school district, and in community schools, they get to decide how it works. And we cannot, we cannot independently decide the path forward with community schools based on our own paradigms of understanding. Because the reason that these schools have struggled for so long is that we haven't done an adequate job of listening to what the needs are in those communities, and this is such an opportunity for us to find out what these communities need. So I highly encourage this board to consider drafting a resolution to help us start fresh with the community schools process. WSTA is absolutely aware that this is a new initiative, this is something new, it's a new paradigm, and that we don't expect everybody to get it perfect the first time. However, we have the opportunity to make it perfect as we go. It means that we didn't have all the information when it started, but we're gaining the information now. And it is really important that, as we move forward, all community partners feel represented. And I'm not talking about me, a white guy in probably the richest school in West Sacramento. I'm talking about the schools that we're representing in the community schools process. We need to make sure that it's the parents and the students and the people that have lived in this community for a very long time that are guiding this process. And I can tell you right now, when I inquired from my community schools liaison about some of these meetings at the sites, the people that are showing up, and I am so happy for their support, but the people that are showing up are the people who show up to everything. It's not the people that have felt left behind by the system, it's the teachers with kids. It's the parents who are on PTO or PTA. It's not the parents that feel ostracized by the system. We have to do better. Those are the folks that we need to reach in order to make sure that these schools that have traditionally been schools for improvement become schools of opportunity and schools that celebrate. Listen, West Sacramento has an extremely proud history in regards to the labor movement, in regards to the history of the state. I mean, do some research about Broderick himself and what, what he sacrificed and what he did. And, and there's some things to be celebrated, but we need to make sure that these schools reflect that opportunity. I understand that any draft resolution isn't necessarily going to be reflect. The draft resolution that I sent, this school board is highly intelligent and has the ability to draft their own resolution. But I think in order to engage all of these community partners, and CSEA, and WSTA, and make sure we create a robust program, we need to have that commitment from WUSD. We understand there's an initiative, but we need to have that commitment from WUSD. Let's see. I wrote words, but I decided to just go extemporaneous. Yeah, words, words are good. Okay, I'm gonna go back to the words. I'd like to reiterate my recommendation that WUSD create a sped task force. We all know that it is challenging to staff sped positions under current conditions in the state of California. WUSD is behind on sped compensation with local districts. Until this disparity is resolved, we need to find creative ways to reduce caseloads, meet minutes, and streamline paperwork, because sped teachers are hanging on by a thread. Let me repeat that, they're hanging on by a thread. I know you know this, I know you've heard from them. We need to look at how paras are being utilized. If it takes a village to raise a child, we need to make sure the villages' limited resources are efficiently structured to serve our growing population of neurodivergent students. They deserve the best educational opportunities we can give them. Lastly, tonight, I have a very specific request on behalf of teachers at Westmore Oaks. Can we at long last get the teachers a key to access the famously inaccessible bathroom that was created when we did the remodel? Normally, I would not bring this sort of item up at a board meeting, but I have been trying to address this issue with the district for at least two years now. It is a problem that has gone back to the remodel. Currently, there are too few options for staff, and they are spread across the campus. It seems like a simple fix that's not being addressed. Unless I'm missing something, MOT just needs to give the approval to give access. Please make this happen for our staff, who only want the opportunity to not have to experience discomfort because of an inability to make existing facilities accessible. We have the bathroom, some of the staff has the key, the rest of the staff does not. I've been informed by Daniel and CSEA that he needs approval from MOT to get that. Our previous director of MOT was having a little power struggle about getting the keys to the bathroom to the teachers. Now we have a new director of MOT, and I just want those teachers to be able to relieve themselves when necessary. It's not that hard of a thing. We have the facilities, let's make it happen. Lastly, and this isn't in my notes, but I wanted to mention it tonight, as I said finally before, so this is another, lastly, finally. It would be helpful, I'm just giving you a personal perspective, if our open session at the board meeting could start at a consistent time. And the reason that would be helpful, just from someone who has to come present before the board, is that I only get the agenda a week in advance. And sometimes, example, during conference week, I've had to make a schedule for meetings that limit my ability to be here on time, and then I have to tweak and run. But the other reason is that it would be nice for our community to know that public comment is going to be at a fairly consistent time every week, so that they don't feel like they've been disenfranchised of their ability to speak. I know this is inconvenient, it might mean the board might go into closed session and have to wait a little while, maybe have a few snacks or whatever, but it would be really helpful if it could be a consistent time for open session every time, so we can make sure that our community has an opportunity to be represented. That's all, thank you very much.
Thank you, President Nepp. And next up is CSEA report, President Gendara, the man with the keys, I understand.
I don't have the keys.
You have to have permission for the keys.
Oh, I have a couple. Good evening, Superintendent Hildreth, board of trustees. I'd first like to talk about, I would like to thank FARA and Human Resources, and our collaboration and communication has vastly improved. If I can work on one thing, it would just be getting requests and information back more efficiently, time. The next thing I want to talk about is, it's the wrong button, but transportation. I know right before the end of last school year, some bus drivers and bus aides presented to you guys. I would like to thank them, because I know what it takes to come up here and speak to you guys. And for someone that has to do it frequently, you know, it's, sometimes it's nerve wracking. But I would like to say, I am going to submit an equity pay adjustment for the bus drivers in transportation. I know for many years now, we have a huge problem of attracting and retaining bus drivers. I know we tried to create a signing-on bonus for them. As much as that's welcomed, it's not retaining them. And as I've stated before, if we want to attract or retain bus drivers, we need to start compensating them with livable wages. We need to start taking into consideration not only the credentials they need, but how important their role is to children's education. They are the first line of getting the students, a great percentage of getting the students to school and home. And I think we need to look into that, and we need to compensate them. So I'll be presenting that to Human Resources here within the next week or so. Third thing I want to talk about is community schools. I first want to thank Dr. Hildreth and CBO Ms. Stovall for our meeting and clarification on the budget this afternoon. With that being said, on March 8th, way back in March, when this was just starting, my Labor Relations representative, and I know FARA wasn't in that capacity at that time, so she doesn't even know what I'm going to talk about, but a cease and desist was sent to the district. I'll forward it to FARA tomorrow. So this cease and desist is for, for community schools and the demand to bargain for any outside contractor. And I know YCCA currently is a topic, and I know we've scheduled, I believe we scheduled today a meeting for, soon, with Human Resources to discuss these duties. Again, as stated in today's meeting with Dr. Hildreth, CSEA fully supports community schools, but we do not, and I will not allow a third party to come in and take my classified duties and my classified work. It's happened in another district not too far from here, and I will not allow that, as I am chapter president, to happen at Washington Unified. And the last thing I want to talk about, unfortunately, in the capacity I'm in, I have been in a lot of investigations, whether it's employee-on-employee, classified-on-classified, whether it is classified against administrator. I would ask that if it is a classified employee that has violated the contract of Article 13, that is Human Resources, FARA, BALJIT's, capacity to do those investigations. I would ask if it is a classified member, and I'll only speak for classified, if it's a classified member filing a complaint on administration, on management, whoever, a non-classified employee, I would like a third party to do it, a non-biased party. So I, I would ask, and I know that comes with a cost, but I think it'd be a fair thing to ask for. And with that, I want you guys to have a good evening, and thank you.
Thank you, President Gendara. Moving on to item L, public comments, and Ms. Samantha Burr is up, but before you come up, I will read the public comment disclaimer. At our regular board meeting held on February 9th, 2023, the board resolved that written public comments received by 3:00 PM on the day of the meeting will be provided to the board and read into the record. And read into the record, but not read during the meeting. Members, the public may address the board on the topics of our board agenda during every meeting. In addition, during regular board meetings, the public may also address any topic within the jurisdiction of the board. Please know the board is listening to your comments, but by law, cannot meaningfully respond to this forum, to items not on the agenda. The board may limit the total time for public comment on any topic for 20 minutes, unless it waives the item limit for an item. Individual speakers may be limited to three minutes to comment on any topic. The board respects the rights of members of the public to speak regarding matters within the jurisdiction. However, please recognize the comments regarding students other than the speaker's own children made during public board meeting may be a violation of the student's right to privacy, and thus the speaker may be legally liable. If you reference a student's name other than your own student, you may be deemed out of order. Furthermore, it is important for the public to understand that negative or derogatory comments made against your district employees or others, even those made in a public board meeting, may be actionable civil defamation. Although the board may not prohibit such comments or policy allows the public to lodge complaints against district employees, providing more opportunity to be heard than is allowed under the open meeting law that governments dismiss. So Ms. Burr, I have you as the first person.
Evening. I don't know why they keep letting me talk, it's really annoying, yeah. So I'm here just to kind of put something on the radar for everyone. So last year, last school year, so two physical years, I put in an MOU to get Elica Mobile Clinics to come and see my students. I checked on that MOU every month, and every month I got the same answer, it's in process, it's in process, it's in process. Nothing happened, obviously, because they're not here. I've done it again this year. I've turned in an MOU, asking for Elica clinics. At this point, I just want the dental clinic to come, the dental van to come, because it's a guaranteed free service, it's not costing the district anything. And I need it to serve almost all of my schools on the north side. I would like it to be at Yolo, I would like it to get to River City, and we can come down to the south side schools if we need to. But again, this time, I'm checking every week, and poor Jennifer is pretty tired of me emailing her at this point. And I'm getting the same answer, it's in process, it's in process, it's in process. Where is the process? Where is it stuck? I don't know where it's stuck. I would like some assistance getting it unstuck, so that I can get these dental vans where they need to go. We're talking about equity, I'm trying my hardest to get it out there, and it's not happening. So I need some help, please. I need some help stop, like fixing whatever is stuck, so that then I can focus on getting the medical clinics, getting the wording correct with Elica, so I can get those medical vans to our schools as well, because that is at a cost, which I honestly think the district should pay if we're really truly about equity. We should pay for these clinics to come, these dental and mobile medical vans to come and see my students on that side, because I have parents kicking out hundreds of dollars at a time to get a T-DAP vaccine, so I can, they can get their kid back to school. at a time to get a T-DAP vaccine so I can, they can get their kid back to school. And on that side of town, $100 is a lot of money. So I'm, even if there is a small cost, it would really be grateful, and I think it would go towards our equity if we could pay it. That being said, I just want it on your radar, everyone's radar, please, so that maybe we can make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burr, and thank you for elevating it. So I'm sure staff will follow up with where we are in process. Thank you. Next up is Mr. Colin Malik.
Good evening, Vice President Wong, members of the cabinet, Superintendent Hildreth. Good evening. Six items for you. Board meeting time fluctuations create disparity in community members. They disencourage people to come to actual meetings, whereas consistency and reliability creates trust, compassion, and honesty and openness with your community. Please try to spend that time having a snack and just stay in there till 6:30. Believe me, the community will thank you. I have to give a thank you as the grievance chair for WSTA to both Principal Gutierrez and Principal Billingsley. They are not only proactive, but they are willing to listen, talk, and find viable, meaningful solutions to both contract violations and grievances, as well as public complaints and anything that pertains to contract issues. Both of these principals should be commended for trying to find reasonable, agreeable solutions to problems that do come up. That's why we have this process. It is refreshing to have principals who adhere to this. I would like, as a parent and as a teacher and an advocate for our neurodivergent students, to please keep in mind the SPED Task Force and the need for keeping, training, and retaining the highest qualified teachers. It is an overburdened area of education that warrants the highest demand for the best educators with the most access to the most resources, skills, and with financial compensation that is appropriate for what they do. They do a huge, heavy lift. They do so much for us at RCHS, and I am appreciative of that. Please consider the SPED Task Force. Please keep in mind, as a public member and a member of the speaking public, that parity of investigations is paramount to building trust within and through the community, that third-party investigations or coming to a conclusion that might not necessarily shine the brightest of light on a subject or member of WSD who has not performed in the exceptional manner that we want is appropriate to say. We have to own our mistakes. We show our kids how to do it. We, as educators and parents and LEOs, can do that as well. I have two more points. These are both non-academic. Keep in mind, winter sports are starting. Students will be coming later home, and it's darker, but go see a basketball game, a wrestling match, or da-da-da-da-da, boys soccer. We would love to have you out there. Please come to the booth, and our system is amazing, by the way. So it's nice to recognize that. And good luck to football and also water polo as well. Lastly, certainly not least, this is an easy one. I'd like to thank Kirk Coffey for allowing me the opportunity to be the Bears announcer this year. We had a wonderful time and an opportunity, and the system that the district invested in has paid dividends from both home and away fans who are continually impressed with the service that we provide, the sound effects, and that we provide a nice, fun, family-friendly, oriented environment on a Saturday afternoon. And the cheer team is awesome, too, as well. Thank you for allowing me to go over. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I have Ms. Briann Munar. Did I pronounce that correctly? Munar?
Hello, Superintendent and school board members. My name is Briann Munar, and I am the president for the West Sacramento Dolphins. I'm here today with our head coach, Jennifer La Perle. And we are here today to make a proposal to have a school board scoreboard installed at the West Sacramento Rec Center. We believe that the community can benefit greatly for having a stationary scoreboard that the high school swim team and water polo programs can use, the city can use, and the West Sacramento Dolphins can use. Last season, the West Sacramento Dolphins were able to raise over $15,000 for the scoreboard and could provide more funding if needed. I have spoken to the city members and the athletic director, Kristy Dornan of River City, about our proposal, and all parties agree, and we would like to make this happen. Athletic Director Dornan has also stated that she has some sports funding that could be put towards it if it is needed. Since the pool is on city and school property, we have been told that we need to get the school board's approval. So that is why we are here today to present our proposal with the hope that this can be on a future agenda. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much, and it sounds like another two-by-two conversation. So thank.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Have a great evening.
You, too. All right. Next up, do we have any other public comments?
No other public comment requests.
Seeing that there are none, they're moving on to actually, oh, because we do not have a public hearing or any information discussion items. Do I have any last minute request on the consent agenda item? Oh, seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve. A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Have your consent agenda item. Now, moving on to action items P. The first one is approval of project authorization with Studio W Architects for the Elkhorn Village Modernization Project. Chief Business Officer, Monique, welcome.
Design.
So, good evening. I'm joined with our partners at Studio W as a follow-up to last week's information item regarding the proposed architect plans for our Elkhorn Village Modernization. During that meeting, there were two questions that were asked, one regarding solar or PV, and another one regarding ensuring that we receive input from our community about the proposed plans.
Good evening, members of the board. Brian Whitmore, Studio W Architects. I didn't have a chance to present to the board at the last meeting, but I trust that our staff, Rigorgano and Adriana Mouser, did a great job. So I'm happy to be here this evening, and I'd be happy to report the response to a couple of the questions that you folks had for us the last time around. One with respect to the photovoltaics. We did a little bit of research. You have quite a bit of photovoltaic on that campus already. You have a number of arrays that have been built as part of that process. And you may be aware that as part of the 2022 code for Title 24, there is a mandate to extend additional photovoltaics to offset some of the energy that's used from new construction. So all of the new construction buildings, we have a mandate to offset approximately 10% of the use of the energy on those spaces. We did a little bit of research with our electrical engineer, and it appears as though the photovoltaics that you have on site, even with the degradation that we would expect over time with those PVs, is enough to cover what we anticipate with the new construction. We'll obviously know a little bit more as we go through the process of design, but one of the things that we did note is the fact that identifying the new buildings, the square footage is associated with those, and then looking at, again, the kilowatt hours that you're producing with the panels that you have, it appears as though you will be covered. So you guys are ahead of the curve when it comes to energy compliance on those projects. The other thing we did is that on Tuesday night, we had a community forum there at Elkhorn Village Elementary School, and we had the opportunity to present to a number of community members. I want to say we had between about maybe 25 and 30 individuals that came. So I think a very good turnout over that hour and a half. They sort of came in waves. We had a lot of positive comments, I think, on the design, a couple of things that they noted, the equity of this design with things like Westmore Oaks and what they understand of the Westfield Village project. Certainly, a lot of positivity as it relates to the safety and security that's proposed for that site, the one point of entry, the fact that we are looking at the idea of enclosing the TKK and preschool playground areas, as well as the idea of further flow through the parking lot and the drop-off area, trying to get a lot of that traffic off of the street there, in particular Douglas, that runs sort of north-south adjacent to the school. Some of the other things that I think they were very excited of was the new construction components, obviously those being permanent and really enhancing the look and the feel of that campus. Couple of themes that they mentioned, one of which was trying to provide more green space. I think there's a desire to certainly provide more green space on that site, talking about possible interface with the city and the MOU that exists there with the park, and perhaps the positioning of the fencing to increase maybe some of the opportunity to use some of that green space on a daily basis. We'll see where that goes. The other comment that was resounding was the idea for a new gym, I think. I think by and large, they'd love to have a gym that is sized appropriately for that campus, understanding, of course, the equity between Westmore and Westfield, that those two properties don't have that size of a gym. So looking at the pros and cons, obviously, in the cost modeling, we would have to look at that. It's very difficult, obviously, to increase the size of the existing multipurpose space within the Department of the State Architect Program, but we'll certainly look at all of those comments as we go through the design process. So we're very excited to start this. Hopefully, you folks are, too. We're looking forward to bringing this school up to the design level that you were doing with the other campuses. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments on this item?
No public comment.
Seeing that there are none, I'll turn it over to the board for any additional questions that may not have been answered.
No question. That was.
Clear coffee?
I just have a question with, now that you've had the feedback from the community, and you've gotten some what they would like to see, would this approval mean that we can't go back and make those changes, or can we still make changes even after we approve?
We will absolutely be making changes as we begin the project. So it's important to remember, this is a concept. And so we received feedback from our community. We'll also speak with our teachers. And as we're working through this process and the entire design process that takes about a year, we'll be bringing in all of the experts. We'll bring in our PE teachers. We'll bring in our special services teachers, our ECE and our preschool teachers to be able to have an opportunity to provide more input, and that the concept will shift a bit. So we'll be able to really make sure we're meeting the needs of our entire Elkhorn community.
That is my only.
Great. Thank you. I have a note, trustee Pazotti, so when you speak, if you wouldn't mind turning on your mic, so people at home can hear what you are saying. Good. Excellent.
Sorry to interject, but that microphone doesn't work, so the microphone next to you, please. Thank you.
But the note sent to me was unclear. It was just a mic.
To clarify.
The mic to the left, sir.
Okay. Moving on, is that just really just grateful to see this design. People wonder what's happening with Measure Z. I'm looking at some of the staff who actually helped me and MOT staff repurpose, like rebutefy the front. So this has been a long time coming in terms of our historical investments in one of our oldest physical sites. Just really excited that, again, this would not have been able to have happened without Measure Z and that equity lens and making sure that our schools on the north side are invested in first. And so just wanted to say that. And for those who are watching and wondering what we are doing with our bond and why we advocated so hard the bond we have. With that said, if there are no other comments or questions, I will entertain a motion to approve.
I move.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval. Congratulations. Thank you, sir.
Now, we're going on to move to P5, which is the adoption of Resolution Number 232437 for the terms and authorizing the sale and issuance of Measure Z Series B bonds. Yours up, Ms. Stovall. Ah, you made it. We were going to put you first. Actually, you could have been first, but you like walked in, so.
Well, good evening again. We are here with our partners from K&amp;N, our financial advisors, to seek approval for the sale and issuance of our Series B Measure Z bond. So I'd like to take a moment to explain what this means, what it is. So our Measure Z bonds were approved by our voters in 2020. 60.93% of our voters approved the bond. And what that did is that enabled us to have $150 million to invest into schools and address our board, identified three projects for the Measure Z bonds, Westfield Modernization, Elkhorn Modernization, and the Performing Arts. And so with our bonds, we have what's called issuance. So we have different phases where we've, in essence, draw down cash, draw down money from the bond, be able to initiate our project. Our first issuance was in June 2021. That was for $60 million and helped us kick off our Measure Z project with our Westfield. Now, we're beginning, as approved, our Elkhorn Village Modernization project, and soon we'll be starting our Performing Arts station project. And so we need to draw down, we need to be able to get funds. And so at this time, we're requesting your approval of a resolution to allow us to issue and do the sell for the $50 million bond for our.
No public comments?
Thank you very much.
Hey, there it is. It does work.
There you go.
No, I really don't have anything on this. So the bond issuance goes 60, 50, 40, correct? So this would make 110 in total. And then we're going to be starting the projects of Elkhorn and Performing Arts Center, roughly similar timing or thereabout. My only question would be, could this, with the, both of them running around the same time, would we need to move up the issuance of the C Series bonds in the future?
You know, I think the idea would be to closely manage the cash flows and how those projects actually take place. And the good news is, is that because within the West Sacramento area and specifically the district's boundaries, assessed values have continued to grow, it's created capacity for that third and final series. So there's some flexibility there, depending on how the project implements.
All right. Thank you.
Clear coffee? You have any comments?
I just want to thank Monique for having a little one-on-one session with me to teach me about bonds. I realize it's not James and James Bond.
Mom jokes.
Mom jokes. Yeah, mom jokes all day. But that was it. So thank you for educating me on how this works. I know I'm going to have more questions later, but as of right now, I actually understood what was happening, so I thank you.
Excellent. Any other?
No, this is a resolution. Sorry. This is a resolution, right?
It is correct, a resolution. So we have to do, yep, and I believe on resolutions, we have to have individual vote. Is that correct? Seeing that there are none, I will, no other comments? Again, grateful for the issuance of bonds to kick off Elkhorn and the Performing Arts. Again, super, super duper excited, even though it's not James Bond. James Bonds. I will entertain a motion to approve. Second.
Motion.
Okay.
Move.
Second.
Okay. Clear coffee? It's a roll call vote.
Yes?
Yeah, okay. Trustee Pazotti.
Aye.
I'm sorry. Is it because it's not James Bond?
No.
An a2 vote, aye, you have your authorization.
You said roll call, so I was like, wait, present? Yeah, so I got a little confused.
It is a roll call vote.
I was like, wait, roll call, I'm here.
To approval of the side letter agreement between Washington Unified School District and CSCA and its. Approval of the side letter agreement between Washington Unified School District and CSCA and its River View Chapter Number One-Sixty-Eight with regard to permanent FTE increase of the health aides position. Farah Ubadula and our labor partners left.
Good evening, Vice President Wong, Trustees, Superintendent Dr. Hildreth. Tonight, we're asking for approval for the side letter agreement between CSCA and WSD to permanently increase all health aide positions from six-hour to eight-hour positions. The cost for this item, the estimated cost for this item, is a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. Approving this agreement will officially solidify the staffing increase to better provide for the health and well-being of our students and for the retention of all of our health aides employees.
Excellent. Do we have any public comments?
No public comments.
Board discussion? Thank you to you and the team and our labor partners on creating the side letter. That was really meaningful. Thank you to the health aides who flagged it for us. And so just grateful for your hard work. Your teams are working to get.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I will entertain a motion to approve.
We'll move.
Second. So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
You have your approval on side letter. Item number two, approval of assignment of the interim assistant superintendent of human services, Dr. Hildreth. Now you're up.
Thank you, Vice President Wong. I want to take this opportunity to bring forward a request for Farah Ubadula to be officially our interim assistant superintendent of human resources. We know that we spent time when our former assistant superintendent of HR shared that he would be leaving. We did a search at that time, but we did not find that there was a candidate at that point who really could take on that responsibility. And so we wanted to ensure that there was consistency in our system. And so we asked Farah if she would take on that responsibility. And starting July one, she has. And so we just wanted to make that official on record. And knowing that the hiring season begins for leadership positions in January, February, and we will post again, but this allows us to make sure that the work continues.
Do I have any public comments?
No public comments.
Any board discussion? Hey, as I said before, you're doing a fabulous job. So I will entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move.
Trustee Pizotti moves. Clerk Coffee, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations. And thank you. Item number four, approval of agreement with Mid-Pacific Engineering Incorporated for special inspections and testing for the Westfield Village Modernization. Increments two and three. DBO, Monique Saval.
Hello again.
Hello.
So this item, we are requesting a approval of a contract with Mid-Pacific Engineering, Inc. As you all are aware, we are in the midst of our Measure Z modernization project for Westfield Village. And when we're doing this work, we are required to get geological testing. And we have a pool of firms that can do this type of testing. Increment one, we have already finished, and at this time, we're at increment two. And pulling from our pool, we request approval for Mid-Pacific Engineering to complete that. And the cost is one hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars paid via the Measure Z.
Any public comments?
No public comments.
Any board comments? Gotta do it legally.
Oh, yeah. I just have a question. If they find something with this material and testing, is that? I'm hoping they don't find anything bad, but if they did, was this, would that push our date of, like, would we have to stop? Like, what's the?
Really good question. It depends on what they find. And many times, if they do find something, then we find the solution to overcome it. And at least to my knowledge, I'm not aware of a situation in our district that has stopped the progress on the project. It may delay the next phases of the project, but then we'll just start working on some.
Okay.
The comment, so really great question about possible delays. If we have to retrofit or do that, we have to do that. And will impact our budget, I'm assuming. So if we're done with board discussion, do I have a motion?
Move.
Clerk Coffee, move. Trustee Pizotti, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to item six, approval to attend the Promise Neighborhoods and Full Service Community Schools National Network Conference out of state in Arlington, Virginia between December eleventh to twenty-eleventh to thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three. And a really great delay.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I am here in alignment with Board out-of-state travel protocol to request to travel to the U.S. Department of Education Conference. As the board will recall, WSD was awarded a full-service community school grant, which is from the Federal Department of Education in partnership with United Way of the California Capital Region. The Promise Neighborhoods program is holding this invitation-only conference for full-service community school grantees. So this will take place in Virginia, and the Department of Education advises that program directors. So myself, along with a program director from United Way, as well as our evaluator, are all requested to attend to participate in the entire three-day event. It includes a pre-conference program on December eleventh, which is going to concentrate on data collection and evaluating and reporting on this grant. There is no cost for the conference itself. Is it a free conference, as we are one of only forty awardees nationwide? And travel and incidentals are covered through United Way and our federal grant.
Do I have any public comments?
No public comments.
Do I have board discussion?
Like asking, so with this, I know that this conference is something that you are required to go to. And so my question is, with the information that you will be collecting with the data collection, boarding, are you going to report back to us or could you report back to us with what you're, you know, what you've learned? Because I think we as a board would like to know some of the things that happen at these conferences because we send you, but a lot of times we don't get to see it because you're doing it at the site or within. Would it be possible to have that shared with us?
Yes, absolutely. I am planning to do a community schools update in December, and that would actually be the day after I would come back from that conference. And so I'm happy to quickly, you know, as I'm there and add into that presentations that I can talk just in real time about what has happened while I was there.
That would be great. Thank you. And you said one of forty nationwide, huh?
Yes, the federal full-service community school with the promise program is about forty of us nationwide.
Oh, I will, if there are any more board discussions? Okay, being none, I will entertain a motion to approve.
Move.
Trustee Pizotti moves. Second, Clerk Coffee, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Have fun in Arlington. It is a wonderful conference with a wonderful few humans. Number seven, approval of attendance to the out-of-state California Activities Director Association Conference from March sixth to the ninth, twenty-twenty-four, in the biggest little city in Nevada, also known as Reno.
I have backup.
Oh, backup. Are you gonna do like a duet or something?
We might. Good evening, board members, Superintendent Hildreth, cabinet, and the audience members. I have June here as our coordinator of student empowerment and leadership. I mix those two up. But this evening, we are requesting the approval of the out-of-state conference for CADA, which is the California Activities Director Association in Reno, Nevada. This conference brings together passionate individuals to support student leadership. We are requesting the approval of both site leadership teachers, site admin, and June in her new position. The cost for the teachers attending is approximately fifteen hundred dollars. And then the cost of admin attending is approximately five hundred dollars because admin attends for one day and the cost of attending is free. Information will be brought back to those who cannot be in attendance. This conference does rotate locations. So this year it is in Nevada, next year it is in San Diego. So just due to making sure that many can attend, it does rotate. So we are requesting approval.
Biggest little city in Nevada. Any public comments?
No public comments.
Four questions and discussion.
No. So I did bring the idea of any time out-of-state travel is being brought up for conferences and things like that, that we, you know, at least be prepared to put an explanation. And you did. And that's all I really wanted to know. And this isn't, this isn't a cross-country, you're driving a, I guess. So I did want to just say thank you for the explanation. That does help. Now, I didn't know that there was an actual conference for CADA. So I, again, like Clerk Coffee said, this would be something we'd love to hear more about and what kind of leadership activities you learn from this conference. See how that's gonna play out for our.
Definitely. The information, not only from this conference, but in regard to all of our student leadership, will be brought back and shared.
So I realized that Mike was still on. Oops, sorry. So a hundred and fifty workshops. And you have fourteen employees going or fourteen district employees going. I don't know how you're gonna divide that all up. But it would, that's a lot of workshops. And I'm eager to hear the ones that you guys, you know, come back with that you feel will be very successful for our school district. And I know that's a lot. So if you can't fit it in a session, by all means, share with us. Because I think there's gonna be a lot there that we're definitely gonna be able to use. You guys have lots of fun and more knowledge.
One of the powers in bringing so many people to the conference is that there is actually time for them to meet and collaborate and share ideas and say, what did you learn? And what can we do here and learn from those?
Any other discussion, comments? Love communities of practice. Battle likes are always really fabulous. And appreciate the cohort of both teachers who are doing this on campuses, as well as administrators and the district coordinator. So really appreciate this. So at this point, I will entertain a motion to approve. Clerk Coffee moves.
Second.
Trustee Pizotti, seconds. All in favor? Have fun at GSR.
Thank you.
But not too much fun. It's GSR. Never been. Really? Is it now, Clerk Coffee? Now, moving on to board governance, item Q one, staff recommendation for district presentation on bonds. So Dr. Hildreth.
Thank you, Vice President Wong. Staff wanted to bring this item to the board. We have heard a lot of information recently about our bonds. And we are so thankful to the community for passing those bonds over the years. Not just Measure Z, but the Measure V, Measure Q, Measure R, and I could be missing another alphabet. But all of the bonds, and we know how important it is for us to be able to share with the community what we are doing with that investment that they voted and approved. And so our thought would be if we would be able to share some information at a board meeting where we could share the education of, you know, what is a bond? And give highlights to all of our bonds and what we accomplished with those dollars and what is happening now with Measure Z. And we just believe it's crucial for the board and for the community to have a clear, well-rounded understanding of bonds and the financial impact. And it's going to play a pivotal role in the district's future financial planning and our projects. And so our recommendation is to schedule or have prepared a presentation that we would be able to share at our next board meeting on November ninth, recognizing that as we get into holiday season and the calendar, which limits the number of board meetings that we're going to be having. So we thought maybe November ninth would be a timely time to share this information.
Hey, any public comments? We'll go public comments. We'll see how some time. Any public comments on this item?
No public comments.
I'll only look to the board. It looks like trustee Pizotti.
Thirteen November ninth.
Oh, calendar.
That's a regular, that would be at a regular board meeting, so.
That's our standard. And that's a regular, hopefully, it's not, yeah.
Yeah, so not a special board meeting that we would be making a presentation at the board meeting. But just sharing that if we do it at a board meeting, part of the rationale was because November is a short month and to try and have additional meetings might be a challenge.
So it's just our next board meeting. Regular. It's not a special.
Okay. The only thought that I would have by that is this could draw a lot of attention and have a lot of comment, therefore taking long time. This is the only, the only rationale, the only thing that I would say that going forward is if it's possible to clear the deck a little bit on that agenda, maybe we might want to do that. So if you could push anything out to, say, the December meeting, it might be worthy to do that. Because we don't know exactly how many people are gonna want to come and public comment. We don't know how many questions we're due, and we don't, we don't know how long it takes. Could be a forty-minute presentation, twenty minutes for public comment. Could, could make this day.
And that's why we bring this for discussion, knowing that to do this at a board meeting is an option. If, for what you're saying, if you would prefer to have a special board meeting, we just would want to know what's the preference of the board.
No, I'm not suggesting that. I'm suggesting as long as, as long as you keep in mind that this is going to be probably a lengthy item.
Yes.
That, bear that in mind as you craft the rest of the agenda.
Yes, that's one of the reasons, if you'll recall in previous board agendas, we had originally planned to have a community schools update in November. But thinking of planning, we've moved the community schools update to December. So that, because that also, we want to make sure that if there's questions, we're prepared for that. And with the community schools, we are really working on collaborating to plan that presentation with our partners. So the timing would, would allow us to have this as a focused conversation.
Good.
Any other comments or discussion or considerations? Seeing that, well, again, beyond light, I may encourage, because there will be a lot of folks who may want to have it earlier than that.
Yeah.
That would, that, again, that the purview is will be President Kirby Gonzalez's, how to draft the agenda. But that is a consideration that hopefully you will, that's what I'm hearing as well.
Yeah.
That we will, it will be, it was, it'll be higher in governance as usual at the end.
Yes.
Let's make sure that it's a. Which will, from, which allow the home and comment appropriately. Are there, that's just, it's just discussion.
Just discussion.
Okay. Okay. We have dispensed of our agenda on board governance. So we are moving on to board and superintendent comments. Turning back to you.
All right. Well, great. I just want to share some highlights from around the district as October winds down, which is hard to believe that we're at the end of the month. So first, want to start with highlighting the WSD Leadership Series. It's a series of workshops that consist of six sessions that are going to be held throughout the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And the sessions are open to any staff member with an interest in leadership roles, management positions, or what it means to be a leader here in Washington Unified. Attendees can choose to attend one of the sessions. Attendees can choose to attend one of the sessions, all six, so it just varies on the topic. Um, our first session was held last Wednesday and it was on, um, being a leader in WUSD. And so it was a wonderful opportunity for, um, Executive Cabinet to be able to talk about our stories and our leadership, um, journeys. We had certificated staff, classified staff, um, management, admin, really there. And so it was really, um, a, a great evening. Some of the feedback that, uh, we've already received is, uh, just the learnings from what each of us shared. Someone shared that they learned the path is not always direct, but if you are curious, it will lead you to where you want to be. Um, another, uh, piece of feedback was I learned more about the Exec Cabinet, their wise and leadership advice. Another comment, just that there are so many cool and unique humans that put in the workday and, and day out for the betterment of WUSD. Uh, a comment, I found Dr. Hildreth's time with the mic to be powerful. I took several nuggets that I will bring with me as I move forward as a leader. And then someone else said, just keep providing opportunities for all staff. Love to see that diverse representation of, of so many different people. So thank you to, um, the HR team, especially to Jen Eraski, the Artosa, who is taking on this work. Uh, we also want to highlight our continued focus on attendance. Even though September is actually attendance awareness month, it's attendance awareness month. Every month for us here in Washington Unified. And so we have been working diligently to increase awareness about the importance and the, of consistent attendance. And so over the last two years, with support of our Executive Director of Communications, we've really focused on campaigns. And so I'm thrilled to share that we announced, uh, last week that Riverbank School achieved something extraordinary. Compared to last year, their school dropped sixteen percent in their chronic absenteeism rate during the first thirty-one days of the school year. And the announcement was made during a school-wide assembly in the main quad. And it transitioned into like a dance party led by the, the mascot. Like, that's what you're supposed to do. So we, uh, gave out attendance-themed stickers, uh, distributed to all classrooms. And the school received a new most improved attendance banner to display on campus for the next thirty days. And we plan to continue to highlight throughout the year what is happening and how we're making progress with attendance. And, you know, we, we know that our, our schools are working really hard and all of our staff, our youth outreach specialists, our, uh, family liaisons, teachers. People are really calling and, and talking to parents and students about the importance for so many reasons of attendance. So we are very appreciative. Um, also speaking of Riverbank, we're going to keep the spotlight on Riverbank because Good Day Sacramento visited the campus this week to learn about their anti-bullying program. And they interviewed students and staff during a live morning segment. Uh, the fourth through sixth grade students, or known as our Otter ambassadors, have been working hard to produce an anti-bullying video to show students how to stand up against bullying and be kind and supportive of others in need. And that video generated a lot of positive attention and underscored helpful reminders for everyone in the school community, such as be a buddy, interrupt, speak up, and tell someone. So congratulations, uh, once more, and thank you to Riverbank and your team for taking a stand against bullying. Uh, as you heard, we had the Elkhorn Village Modernization Community Meeting on, uh, Tuesday that allowed our facilities team to get that input from, uh, the community. And I have heard from some community members who have shared their appreciation, um, for us opening that up and really trying to get the word out beyond those who normally know about the word. So, um, the only challenge we had is it's parent conference week. So that, I, I think if our, our timing had been differently, we would have had an even greater turnout. But to know that parents left the school, have a conference, stop by the, uh, district office to give their input, just gives us, um, the awareness that people are involved and want to know about the good things that are happening in the community and what those bond dollars are, are actually paying for. Uh, we have, uh, West Sacramento Home Run workshops. Uh, we thank our West Sac Home Run team, who have been hosting a series of informational workshops, uh, from our school campuses at Westfield Village and River City High School. The series began on the seventeenth, so last week, at Westfield. And the next date is November second at River City. And each workshop is designed to raise awareness with families for programs like our West Sac Home Run Ready, Set, Save Initiative, which can help your student earn up to one thousand dollars for their post-secondary education. And they'll explore the state program Cal Kids, where students can qualify for up to fifteen hundred dollars towards their future education, among many other exciting things. So thank you once again, uh, to our West Sac Home Run team for bringing this information directly to our schools and our community. And then lastly, we know Tuesday, next Tuesday is going to be probably the best day for many of our students, um, and families who celebrate Halloween and are looking forward to, uh, different activities. And so, uh, schools are hosting a Safe Trunk or Treat. So that is happening in many, uh, communities. And also the city of West Sac Parks and Rec is also hosting a Safe Trunk or Treat event at River City High School this Saturday, October twenty-eighth, from eleven AM to two PM. It's a free event and all ages are welcome. And many of our community partners, including us here at Team WUSD, will be representing and providing treats and games and fun to youth of West Sac. And I also want to thank, uh, Dr. Mascareñas and our DEI team, because we also sent out some reminders, um, to our schools of ways for our students and families who don't celebrate Halloween. Here are giving them some options of still fun activities to do things to consider so that we are making sure that we're valuing all cultural traditions. Um, and we know that diversity is our strength here in Washington Unified. So thank you, Dr. Mack, for providing that, uh, resource. And with that, I will turn it over to the board.
So much. Rusty Pizzotti.
Well, speaking of Halloween, my daughter has informed me that I'm going as Mr. Clean because I bear such a striking resemblance.
That's a really hard costume for you to pull off.
Yeah, it is tough. Yeah, he's.
A little bit on brand.
It really is. Doesn't hurt at all. So.
He's very famous.
No, I know. Since the early thirties. So I'd just like to comment on a couple of items that I heard from, uh, some of the public comments. And I hope that maybe we can follow up with. Um, one was the MOU with some of the clinic would love for us to at least provide an update to the teacher that was up here. And give us more information, at least more detail other than, um, we're in progress. There's another issue of, I don't want to get into the, the issue of increasing sped pay to attract people. What I would like to do is gain, uh, a bit of information on all of our, all our sped positions built. Um, because this was something that I think we had a comment or that I, I know I've commented on previously. Um, are, are the sped? Teachers meeting their hours? Are they meeting their, you know, their minutes with the, with the kids? Are their caseloads overburdened? Um, and if so, then we need to address that. That's, that's number one, right? And I'm not sure how we're going to do that. And, you know, sometimes getting. Parents that cycle in and out sometimes because we can't meet their needs as well is just putting a Band-Aid on, you know? And, and I want to make sure that we're really taking care of, you know, our most needy children. And, and that means providing them with everything that. Let's see, what else did I? Oh, the scoreboard, the swim team will be talking about that, the two by two. Oh, I, I've already brought this up with Dr. Hildreth, but I wanted to with the board about it here, um, is that when we're talking about, um, our build positions at our schools, um, I know we have several schools that have, um, you know, long-term subs with emergency credentials. I think what I, I want to know when we get some input or feedback is, yeah, that's covering all the, it's covering all the slots. I would like to know how many of those slots are not covered with a permanent build credential, fully credentialed. That's the, that's the number that I want to know. That to me is, I want to get, you know, full-time slotted positions built with full-time credentials. Um, so, yes, it's nice to know that we may not have any classrooms empty with teachers, but having them with the people that we want to have there, meaning, you know, full, full-time positions. That's something that I would like to have some information. Oh, so I, this would be the last thing. So Bridgeway Island had their career day and, you know, I was asked to participate. I've never heard of us doing this. I've never had us heard of, uh, a career day. And it was shocking, at least for me. Um, cause I was asked to participate as, as expla- explaining my career to, you know, sixth grader, which is sort of difficult because my kid does. So I did, and I, I explained, um, you know, that I have three hats. You know, I'm a lobbyist, political consultant, and a school board. And, um, and so when I was explaining that, you know, it was brought up to me, like, one of the questions was, what was your most difficult, um, thing that you learned in your educational career? And I had to really think about that because everything for me was very difficult. You know? But when I thought about it, I was like, what I had to learn was I had to learn to never. And that was a. Because it was, it would have been so easy, given from where I came from and the challenges that I, you know, that I had. That it would have been so easy to give up and just, you know, be in a. And so I kind of explained that to them and I, and I finally saw that some of the faces, uh, from the kids that I was talking to actually made. You know, they still didn't understand what lobbyist is. They still didn't understand political consultant necessarily. And they definitely didn't understand. But what they did understand was, you know, that it is difficult. Um, it is difficult if you have, you know, a hurdle like dyslexia, ADHD, and then still continuing pursuit when you have those barriers and those roadblocks, or if you have drugs in your family at home and, and there's abuse and things like. And then still moving forward. And to that, you could see that they were actually listening. So I, I, I just, I, I wanted to say thank you, Ms. Kugler's class, for having me in. And, um, it was just a blessing to be able to talk. I hope that we do that, you know, in all of our. I think it's wonderful to have everybody, you know, neck with professions. Give our kids, you know, a, a chance to hear from people that they would have never thought to hear. Um, with that, that's all I have.
Resilient is what you would call in your little moment. Thank you. So yes, Riverbank on the news. I got to see it and I got to record it. So I was excited and then I showed my son, who is a Otter Ambassador. And he was like, yeah, we're the, we're the stuff. You know, my kid. Definitely anti-bullying campaign. Way to go. So knowing that we have this anti-bullying campaign and there is bullying happening at campuses, whether it's something that we want to acknowledge or not, we, I mean, it is something that does take place. And, um, oftentimes I'm hearing it from parents who are, my child is being, is a victim. And although my child is the victim, my child is the one who is being asked to move the school, from the school, instead of the bully or the person who, or several individuals who are being the bully. There's, it feels like there's no consequence. We're having the victim be removed from the school site. And I'm not sure why that's happening. Because with, I would like to say with state service, when there is a bully and if it is upper management or whatever, usually it's that the offender who's the one who typically has to leave or move. Um, it's not usually the victim. So, um, I'm not sure what the process is, but I would like to know what that is. Um, I don't know if that needs to be something that can be sent to me in an email or what, but, um, I'd really like to know what the policy is on bullying and, um, how it is that, um, or why it is that certain, certain victims are being asked to leave school sites, um, and not the bully. So that's anti-bullying. Want to promote that. But how is it that we are keeping bullies at their, that same school? I just need to know. Have to understand that. On a positive note, I did go to the YOLO handball tourney. Um, and it was a lot of fun. Barbecue, get to see these kids, man, they are, they are determined to win. And of course, there was, uh, one of the teams, um, when they had the, the buddies that they didn't win and they blamed it on their shoes. I'm like, we can go and say it was the shoes, but we know, we know. You weren't really into it, but I'm giving kudos to, um, Chico. You did amazing. Kudos to him. He got two trophies for individual as well as being part of the pair. Great food. Kudos to the chef. I'm gonna call her a chef because that was amazing. Um, hot links, no tortillas, but it's okay. Just saying. Got to have a tortilla with hot links. Uh, so, but one of the questions that I got asked from, um, from some of our YOLO kids was, we want to play sports and we're at YOLO and we don't have that option. And some of these kids, they just want to, they just want to have some extracurricular activities. So, um, could I also get what are the options and possibly some of the, the, whether there's a policy? What is the, the criteria it is so that we can have our, um, kids that don't have that option of a sport at their site, what they can do? So like, let's say there's an elementary school, Elkhorn versus Riverbank, and Riverbank has something that Elkhorn doesn't, and Elkhorn wants to participate. How does that happen? YOLO doesn't have water polo, but there's a kid who wants to join water polo. What are the, what are the options for those students who are at a site and they don't have that, um, extracurricular activity available to them there, at their homeschool? Um, or optional school, or whatever school you want to call it. Uh, so yeah, so that was one of my questions I got asked. Now I'm asking. Definitely had a learning experience at the Wash accreditation for the Washington Middle College, uh, this past week. Felt like I was being in. Um, felt like I was being interrogated, but I wasn't. But I swear that's how I felt because I was down here. And, but I mean, I know I'm short, but I felt like I was down here and they were up, up high on these stools and I'm looking up like, oh, hello. Right, Farrah? That's how it felt with their squeaky chairs. Um, so just like, yeah, it was a lot of, it was a learning experience, definitely. Um, but glad to hear that there are so many good things that are happening at Washington Middle College, and, um, really thankful to have this cabinet there to provide that resource and the, the, the support that they need there to continue to thrive and, and grow as a school. Um, so thank you. Thank you for doing that. Ah, sorry. Um, going back to President Nep's, um, recommendation about the community schools, um, and the resolution, I think that might be something we can bring to the policy, uh, meeting, committee meeting, subcommittee meeting, and discuss it there before bringing it to the board, so that way we awesome. I'm getting it. It only took me almost a year. So, let's go ahead and discuss, uh, we'd like to talk about that. Um, the sped task force was another topic that was brought up. Um, I don't know what it takes to create a task force. Um, is that something we would bring to policy as well, or is that something we talk about here, or?
No, that's something that, uh, we can look into and I'll work with, um, Ms. Street and Ms. Salvo of what that might look like, and then we'll bring an update to the board.
Awesome. Because I wasn't sure, and so that's why I'm asking. Um, and of course, yeah, the water, um, not water, but the water scoreboard, I want to call it water scoreboard, but it's a water polo scoreboard that the Dolphins also use, West Sacramento Dolphins, and the River City High School uses, and community uses. So, love that, two-by-two. Awesome. See, I'm learning. And oh, yeah, and then definitely, I guess we can talk about that, the open session, starting it consistently. Is that something that we could bring up as well?
That'll be something that when I'll talk, when I meet with President Kirby Gonzalez, let her know about the request. And as she, uh, sets the agenda, we can let her know that that was an, an act.
Okay. Yep. And that is really, I think, all that I have. Yep, that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you to staff. Um, we're ending super early, even though we had a lot of active items. Um, grateful. Thank you for sharing your lived experience. It matters, matters, um, to, to us. Um, that we are represented here with our lived experience, as well as what we do with, um, everything we do from community schools to classrooms to special DEI. Um, it is, it is pretty powerful, and, um, I encourage more people to carry your lived you get to inclusion and normal, so seeing each other, connecting with one another, um, is something that we should value. Um, because it makes the work easier and joyful. Um, so with that said, really love the, um, I'm not sure if we've ever done this Dia de los Muertos, the district is doing it. The sites are doing it, this, um, the ofrendas, like, I am just so overjoyed and thank you. I'm looking at those who were, um, leading it. And so thank you for creating the ofrenda, uh, afuera, to oftina.
Okay.
And so, um, I will be participating in that, just honoring my, um, the ancestors. So in my culture, we also have, um, ofrendas, um, altars for, for those who have, um, lived a life before. And I love this concept of convivir. Like, in this essence, that we are in this of Dia de los Muertos, that it is really living together. And I always say that we stand on the shoulders of giants. We are here on this dayas momentarily. And we make decisions that last a life, hopefully that energy, the, the wisdom of our elders and our communities and those who have led before us, guide our discussion. And thank you for that reminder and a district-wide effort. It's very powerful. Very powerful to see the school, the, the local school, um, in various, um, communities, actually also having ofrendas and celebrating Dia de los Muertos. I'm looking at, um, brew a coffee and, um, so the meaning of that is really, really powerful, because we've lost a lot of souls recently. Um, and it's just really thankful. Thank you for, for leading that effort. Um, I had the, um, honor and blessing of being able to be asked by the California Association of Student Councils be part of the advocacy summit where they actually present to school board members. And I would encourage, and my wondering then becomes whether or not our school, um, coun- student councils can participate and be more active in the California Association of Student Councils, because not only do they do this regionally, but they prep it for an advocacy day in the, the Capitol. Um, and so they've been able to, um, do a lot of things like please stay if they can vote. So really, um, I encourage that our, uh, encourage our leadership team, um, to actually join the, the CAS, um, association, because they do have power in what, um, many of us who advocate in the Capitol every single day. So a student voice is missing in those conversations, and would be really powerful for them too. Um, either, uh, on that leadership note, um, Empower Her, um, which, um, allows, which we actually sponsored thirty students, thirty female students, um, from grade six through eighth will be in March, and that will be coming forth. Um, and hoping that we can support, again, um, that, that effort. I may have asked, I have may have asked the planning committee to consider Dr. Mascareñas and Dr. Hildreth as part of a session about female leadership in education. Um, that may or may not be forthcoming soon, but hoping to highlight kind of the, um, the really just the female, I'm looking at like majority, super majority of females in this room and our cabinet, and how powerful that is, and the good and righteous work that y'all are doing. Um, yes, with our male allies, I understand that. So allies still, like, for a long time, it didn't look like this in leadership. So, let's just say that just super proud when I, I, I look out into the audience, look at our cabinet, um, looking at the supports. It's just amazing to have such nominal leaders, um, even at our school site. So, thank you for what you do. And with that said, that is the end, that's the end of my comments. So we're gonna move on to future board agenda items. Um, Brown Act Training will be November thirteenth, uh, twenty-twenty-three. Um, we have this presentation on bonds, November ninth, eleventh ninth, as we just, um, discussed. And then a community schools update in December. Anything else on future board agenda items that we may have missed? Uh, understanding that we are going, coming on a very, a couple of very short boards.
We only have one meeting in
And current, and January. So one, one and one. Two, two for the rest of the year. Two for the rest of the year. Oh, yeah, yeah. Um, yeah. Okay. Seeing that there are none, we can just, we've dispensed of our agenda, and we can adjourn at seven? Seven forty?